Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 26th. First item on the agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rizado? Rizado?
Oh, we can't hear him.
Hold on, we have to... Can you guys hear us online? Somebody unmute and let us know. Okay, there's two that are trying to talk, so...
And Dan's trying to...
Tony, I think we're... Our system's probably muted here.
Yeah, it's probably muted inside here.
On the touchscreen.
Technical difficulty.
Mark has learned this.
Yeah. Mark's our IT guy, so he's gonna go check it out. You guys changed all the stuff in the system, I don't know anything about it now.
Can you hear us now?
Can everybody hear us online?
Tony's trying to talk, they can hear us, but we can't hear them. Tony's talking, but we can't hear him.
There's something maybe within Zoom that we need to update?
Uh...
There's no input.
Again?
He's just laughing. See, they can hear us, so I can't make jokes about Chris needing to put a little SPF 50 on his head.
Speaker, you're right, maybe this is...
On the beach, there we go, he can hear me.
That's true, one more try this.
Try that one, let's go through them all.
Really?
Can everybody hear us online?
Hey, we can hear somebody, but with...
Yep, maybe next...
Yes, this is a bad commercial.
No, it's a microphone, you wanna do the speaker. That's the one that didn't work.
Can you talk it online again?
Nope, you can't hear that one. The ALT or the ATL. Yeah, try the ATL.
I don't think so.
Can everybody hear us online?
What he do, it was a bad crystal.
I can hear Tony.
Alright.
Yeah, and I can hear Anthony.
Yeah, I do same as system.
That's the speakers or headphone, why isn't it going?
Same as system.
Bottom one.
Same as system.
Right there.
Maybe it's because Laura's got...
Hello?
Nope.
Aw, man.
I think it's...
Hey, can everybody just come down here? They're far away. A small town.
I wonder if there's something within here that you have to change?
No, that, we tested that part earlier.
You want me to just put this mic down there?
You wanna do a speaker one again?
Yeah, just the speaker, and we're gonna put...
There would have to be something here to link them up.
I can hear you, uh, all to myself.
So it's a matter of something in the system here.
Yeah, that's why I wanted you to click on this right here, if you click on this right here, we have to change...
Come all the way over to the right corner, where the speaker is down there. Nope, too over.
Speaker right there, try that one, and then go up here, and that. And then...
Sure, echo.
Yeah, I can hear I'm talking.
Try each of those.
Talk again.
No, you have to go to the other side now and switch it over to the echo cancelling speaker phone.
So switch to...
Is what you're gonna have to pull up. Go up, top one.
Now talk. Somebody online, talk. Nope.
Nope.
Go to speaker headphone.
Okay, now...
Hold on. Did we...
It's this, it's in this system, that's right.
Somewhere in there, let's see.
Whoa.
Click on that, yup.
Go up.
Try this one, speaker headphone.
Now try.
Can everybody hear us? Talk? It's still coming there, huh?
Not coming on through the top? Go ahead and talk once, Chris.
Uh, do you like the Aurora Borealis behind me right now?
Yeah.
We can hear him now through this.
But it's gotta be able to get onto the recording to be able to be broadcast, and for anybody that's watching to be able to hear it.
Yeah, try this, uh, this is on speaker headphone, we do same as system.
I think...
No, it's a microphone.
Let's go back to the...
Start over?
Okay, can somebody talk again?
I'll sign out and sign back in?
No, that's not it, something here.
It's gotta be on the shirt.
Right. I just tried to put this on mute.
Unmute, go back into the menu there.
We'll spend more time doing this.
So we want to select the microphone.
The microphone has to be sure.
I think they all have...
This one, this one is speakers, we do share.
What if you get same as system on both of them?
And then let's try it over here, share.
This point, let's just turn on...
Here's share right here.
Then try doing the microphone too, I guess.
Guys just keep talking online.
You guys can have a conversation, since you can hear each other.
Literally.
So you're...
This'll be funny. Laura goes away.
If you wanna go up to the top...
Everything goes crazy.
Click on that. Don't you want them all the same?
Go back to that little speaker.
None of them are talking. There you go, that was fun, sure. Nope, you can't hear it. What is that system over there called?
Go back to this one.
This is the only thing.
I know Howard said set this right, like the...
Doesn't have like a...
Right. Yeah, this is the settings that Howard said put on this one, this one.
You want me to call Howard?
Yeah. Got this one on here. And it's sure over here too.
Here, hold on, we got a message.
They said we can hear everyone online and in the chamber, but you can't hear us.
Thanks, Joe. We kinda got that, but we're not having any.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was not what we wanted.
I know it's not.
You know, I had to say something about this meeting being over shortly.
Really, really short.
It's all my, you can blame me tonight then.
What are we... Oh, it's going up, it's going up.
I know, I'm gonna let it go all the way up.
At least though, everybody could've been here in time, or quicker.
Yeah.
We all live within five minutes, yeah.
And there's no problem crossing the bridge tonight.
Not tonight.
Bring your kids, put them in the back.
Do you just send your kids over to my, my house, Keenan, and have them pull weeds and pick up walnuts?
They do not wanna do that.
They don't know how much I'm paying.
Well, my neighbor, my neighbor did pay them to do weed her yard, they did it once. They're like, eh.
Yeah.
They, they get into something in this.
This is... Yeah, that's the, that's the one that Howard wanted us to choose. And we had it on there earlier and it wasn't.
Microphone works.
Mm-hmm.
What speaker does it say? It says it's, now you have choices there.
Yeah, it's giving us those same ones, that's...
What's the ATL 1080MCH, what's that? That's display audio. Okay, well, while it's testing, then try a different one.
Alan, where does the sound out when they were...
Out when the weight out.
Can we just put a mic near that?
That's why I have, I have to...
Somebody's trying to talk right here.
It comes out, it's somewhere down there.
Select the presenters, what we should be using.
And that's what we had the setting on earlier.
They're both sure.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we were in there.
Yeah, it's a microphone like magic.
Yeah, but they can hear us, microphone works, you hear. Change the microphone, isn't it gonna do it? Change it, but it's not...
Yeah, they still can't hear us, well...
Hear you down there, just fine.
Yeah, I heard him.
It's ringing through.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a sure. Talk now.
I hear you, but I ain't listen.
They were on the...
Yeah, they want a little speaker down here.
Okay, well then, let's do this, get it so that you can hear it out of that speaker over there. What did you do to do that? Okay, so somebody talk.
Hello?
Okay, now take a microphone and set it down there. Keenan, you'll have to move over.
I'm already done.
Oh, okay. So is that loud enough to hear through the... Can you hear that in the speak, in the broadcast?
Hear me well.
Go, go ahead and talk, Chris.
We can hear you just fine, I mean, it's actually clear, more clear now than it was before.
Okay, well, we just need to make sure we have your microphone turned up high enough to get onto the broadcast. Yeah.
I'm gonna go back to this one. Can somebody go ahead and talk again, please?
Nope, we can't hear him now.
Setting back in here.
Talk again?
Hear us now?
Yup. Barely.
Hello?
Okay, I think that's as best as we're gonna get right now.
Yeah, when we go to this setting, it doesn't, doesn't work.
Maybe do microphone volume up, 'cause that's where they're coming through?
Yeah.
Right?
Say something again?
Can you hear us now? Check one.
That's loud. Have it all the way up, like full blown online, and it's still like, you can hear him, but it's still kind of, will probably be soft on it.
Yeah.
I'm only be able to probably hear it, 'cause I'm...
But I can hear, I can hear Alan just fine when he talks.
Right, and, and that's, that's, okay, what we're trying to do is make sure when you guys talk online, it can be heard in the chambers and on the broadcast. That's what we're having an issue with. Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead and talk again, Tony.
Can you hear me now? Check one.
That's better. It's a little tinny, tinny, but it's, it's better. Okay! Now I think we are ready to go back to the meeting here. So our first item on the agenda will be roll call, now that we can hear everybody.
Want me to start from the beginning?
Just start from the beginning, yeah.
Miller?
Here.
Rizado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Kansas?
Here.
Zoffa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi? Malay?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger. We have 12 in attendance tonight.
Okay. Reminder to please speak directly into whatever microphone you are using, so that we can hear you on the broadcast tonight. Okay, up next would be item three, is approval of the minutes from September 14th, 2021. Anybody have any comments, corrections, anything on it? Not, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Yor, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Say Serone?
Yes. Serone?
Aye. Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
Zoffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Uh, Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Twelve, zero.
Okay, thank you. Items to be removed, added, or changed? IT session maybe on City Hall, uh, audio? Okay. Uh, then item number five is matters from the public. Do we have anybody online? Didn't see anybody. Okay, then we will move on, then right to item number seven, instead of six, but number seven is presentation on the water treatment plant monthly construction update. Welcome.
Hello, good to see everybody again, I was here uh, last month, giving a comprehensive update on the water plant construction. I'm gonna, yeah, share a screen here. Thank you. As I pull up the... This one here, presentation, um... So if you'll recall, uh, the last time I was here, one month ago, talked about, uh, the water treatment plant modifications, and gave a comprehensive update on the project and the background, more thorough background on exactly what was happening at the facilities. This is meant to be much more streamlined and quick, as I'm sure you all appreciate, um, of the updates within the last month. So, really quickly, some, uh, frame of reference again, uh, there are two major components that I'll highlight, uh, where there's been construction activity in the last month. Uh, there's two water treatment plants there, uh, this you're seeing here on the screen is water treatment plant number two, and that, uh, houses pressure filtration for iron removal, uh, from the shallow wells. And there's an addition, uh, being constructed onto the building, uh, to give more space, uh, for their brine system, uh, that is a major component of the disinfection, uh, that is added to the water before it goes out to the distribution system. So there's an architectural rendering at the bottom right there of what it, uh, is going to look like, and uh, the other major component is the underground backwash storage tank, which takes, uh, backwash flow from water treatment plant number one, and it will store it underground and relieve it, uh, to the sanitary sewer system in a controlled environment, um, and getting rid of the open lagoon, uh, that is currently there at that site. So, construction progress within, uh, the last month. Uh, at water tra, treatment plant number two, with the building expansion, uh, there's been quite a bit of work, uh, above grade finally, with the brick and the block, uh, that has been set, so you can even see on the pictures on the right-hand side, uh, that that expansion is really taking shape. Uh, they have put the trusses on, they have put the plywood sheathing, and they're now putting, uh, the shingles on, they're re-roofing both, uh, the existing facility there, plus the, uh, the new roof. Uh, they will be doing the same thing with water treatment plant number one after they're done with this building, but the major push, uh, for this portion of the project is getting the building weather tight, so that they can work inside throughout the winter, uh, to complete all of the plumbing and electrical work, and get that part of the facility operational, uh, by the end of winter and into spring. The backwash storage tank, uh, is, uh, the progress is shown here, so uh, the last time that I came and presented, they were, uh, just finishing up the base slab, uh, within, uh, the last month, they have, uh, poured all the tank walls, and installed the rebar for the top slab of the tank, and today, they actually, that bottom right picture is from today, they poured half of the top slab, uh, of that tank, and they will be pouring, uh, the second half of it tomorrow. So that's really coming along, once they finish that second half of the top slab, uh, that concrete work will be done, uh, they will be able to finish some of the inside work of the tank, uh, backfill around the tank, and, um, start doing the interconnecting piping. Well 11 rehab, just go back here, sorry about that, little lag, uh, well 11 rehab, pumping assembly equipment, uh, had been ordered a number of months ago, one of the supply chain, uh, fun items going on right now is there's long lead times for, uh, equipment such as, uh, well pumps, and so, uh, we're still waiting for that equipment to arrive and to be installed, we expect that within the next month or two. And then the rehabilitation of the motor and the piping is ongoing. So, after well 11 is complete and back online, they will subsequently move to the next deep well. Uh, there's actually two remaining on this project, wells nine and well 10, uh, so those are scheduled to be completed as part of this project as well. High-service pumps, which pump the water from the treatment plants out to the distribution system, uh, there's three each at water plants one and two. Uh, two of the high-service pumps, one at each facility, so two of the sunk, the six pumps have been removed and are currently being rehabilitated. So, uh, as soon as that rehabilitation work is done to the pumping assembly, uh, they will be reinstalled, uh, put back online, tested, and then the contractor will move on to the next two pumps. Uh, so this is all done in a strategic manner, uh, to keep the plant active, so that, you know, one pump at each facility being down, uh, the facility can still operate without any issues, uh, with that circumstance. So the next steps here, uh, complete the backwash storage tank. We anticipate that work to be done within the next month or two. Certainly the concrete work, as I mentioned earlier, will be done tomorrow, and then there's a lot of interconnections, uh, so it can be ready to accept backwash flow from water plant one. Water plant number two, completing the weatherproofing of the build, the brine building addition, beginning the interior work, really stepping up the plumbing and the electrical work in particular, uh, over the next couple of months. Initiate the dualator rehab, so dualators are equipment in water treatment plant number one, that provides, uh, the treatment for the deep wells, and the media, uh, they're gonna take one of, there's two dualators, they're gonna take one offline at a time, and they will be, there's been a, a huge coordinational effort with a lot of moving pieces, it's very dynamic, and there's been a lot of preparatory meetings to make sure that operationally things, uh, go off without a hitch, while one dualator is off at a time, uh, that they're able to, to backwash the remaining dualator without any issues, and have it be fully functional. Uh, the strategic, there's also, uh, some, a strategic nature of the timing of this, doing the work in the winter, uh, during the period of time when less water demand is needed by, uh, by the distribution system. So, we anticipate that this, uh, the first dualator work, uh, will go, will be underway within the next month. Uh, there's still some discussion about mobilization and making sure the contractor has all the parts they need. Certainly want to make sure all of the components are in hand and on site, uh, before they take one of the dualators offline. The ongoing well 11 and high-service pump equipment repairs, we're hoping, crossing our fingers, that there's gonna be some positive movement on those items within the next, uh, month. Um, course up to a supply chain, as I mentioned earlier, uh, but certainly within the next two months, we expect, uh, some very positive movement there. So more in the schedule, uh, format, uh, you can see the, the major components of the project and, uh, the current progress, so here we are in late October. Uh, the brine area work is about halfway done, uh, with the building construction, uh, being, very close to being weatherproof, there's still quite a bit of interior work that'll happen through winter with the anticipation of start up, uh, in late winter, early spring. The backwash storage tank is nearly complete. Uh, the well rehabs, uh, are going to be going throughout the duration of the project, which substantial, substantial completion is in July, uh, of this next year, and so we anticipate well 11 to be back online by the end of this year. The dualator rehabs, again, will be starting, hopefully within the next month, is what we anticipate, and then those dualator rehabs will take us through spring. Anticipation is that they will both be back online when the higher demand period hits in late spring, early summer. High-service pump rehabs, uh, similarly, want to get those complete by early spring, um, or late spring, early summer, and the chemical feed pumps for the sodium hypochlorite disinfection, that work will be happening, uh, throughout the winter, and staggered such that, uh, there will be no operational, um, stoppages at the facility. Everything is being done very carefully, uh, the operators are, uh, very engaged in the projects, uh, city staff, as well as contractor and ourselves, to make sure that, uh, the water supply, uh, keeps going throughout this project. And with that, I will take any questions.
Does anybody have any questions or comments tonight? Well, I hope that they get the supply chain issue figured out and get that going, I know it's really starting to affect the, the automotive industry that I'm in, that we're really starting to see supply issues with things that we would normally not have any problems with, are becoming more and more a daily issue to try to find simple things, just like brake rotors that aren't available.
It is certainly an industry, you know, everybody's dealing with it, and in a lot of different sectors, and it's interesting, you would, some things we run across that we're able to get immediately, um, it just depends on, um, you know, what, what the issue is, you know, is it coming from overseas, obviously it's gonna complicate things, but, um, yeah, we're keeping a very close eye to make sure that none of the supply chain issues are going to, uh, push any of the critical items beyond, um, when it would impact, uh, the facilities and the operations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you again.
We'll see you next month.
Yes, indeed.
All right, um, up next then would be item number eight, which is ordinance 21-61, uh, establishing the SSA 56 for the Fox Valley Business Park. And this is one that we've had before us a couple of times to get it to this point, I think it went through the the last hearing, then we have a public hearing at our second meeting in November, I think.
So, yeah, there's basically two ordinances, whenever we have an SSA proposed, one is the proposing that sets the date, and then the establishing ordinance, which will be coming up, uh, in, uh, paired with the, uh, public hearing for the, uh, SSA itself. So, uh, at, this basically, uh, having on the agenda tonight, uh, has, allows us to put the, uh, establishment ordinance on after the public hearing is concluded, uh, at the next council meeting on the 8th, so...
And then we should probably put it on, uh, many of the whole meeting afterwards, to make sure that it actually got filed and recorded this time, so we don't have to do this again for that one.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, and this one compared to the, the previous iteration, uh, the last time we, uh, attempted the special service area, it was only for, um, basically the undeveloped properties. This time, uh, we are including, uh, all of the properties that are already out in the Fox Valley Business Park and the industrial park. Um, so it would basically be effective for, for everyone, once the property is fully developed. But yeah, it's a, a backup special service area, it would not be levied, uh, unless for any particular reason, the, um, uh, owner association fails to maintain, uh, their, uh, common areas detention and so forth.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I see Nick, you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious, um, you, you brought up this, this'll affect everyone once it's developed. A, I wanna ask if, if there's anything in the works to be developed there, and B, what, what triggered this? Is, is this just filling in gaps, or was there a, uh, an issue out there with the association or with the owner that we thought we better get this in place?
Uh, well, I guess it's twofold, uh, the first is just, we, we knew that we needed to go back to this one and, uh, take care of it the, the right way this time. Uh, so part of it's just, uh, making sure we have that, that backup special service area in place. The property was, uh, listed with a new agent, I believe, or they were attempting to auction the property, or some of the properties together, um, earlier this year. Um, my understanding is that, that that auction didn't result in anything, so, uh, it was also to probably, to, in, you know, along with the additional inquiries we received, uh, knowing that the property was basically on the market again, uh, we wanted to make sure it was in place, uh, you know, before any other development proposals came. Uh, the city has not had, received any development applications on this property.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Chen?
Good question, so, if for some reason we...
I have a question. So if for some reason we do have to levy the SSA, what is the process, um, what is that process? Like, are the owners notified? Is the association notified about that?
Sure. Uh, so, um, what statute requires or state statute requires is that, um, we do hold a public hearing. Basically in front of the council, anytime that there's a levy over, uh, there's some minimum percentage, but basically anything from zero, the first time you're activating it, uh, requires a public hearing. Um, I'm not sure what the notice component of that would look like in terms of whether it's just a, uh, you know, in the newspaper or whether we have to send notice to, uh, the individual owners. Um, but essentially, I, I believe the process, uh, if we did enact it, would be to, uh, contact the association, let them know that they, um, have failed to maintain these items, give them an opportunity to try and resolve that before we go to the process of opening the, uh, or assessing the special service area. So, um, that generally would be how that would work. It would be a public hearing in front of the city council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, I will, uh, make the motion that we recommend ordinance twenty-one dash sixty-one establishing SSA fifty-six for the Fox Valley Bus- Business Park.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger? Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Kansas?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve, zero.
All right, thank you. Up next is item number nine, project status. Anthony?
All right, thank you, Alderman Wolf. Uh, I am, uh, doing the project status on behalf of Laura Newman, our city administrator. Uh, from our administration department, uh, we will have a city council meeting, uh, at seven thirty PM on November first. Uh, that Tuesday, we will have a Cal meeting, November second, at seven PM. From our public works department, uh, contractor is scheduled to begin work on replacement of thirty-four thousand volt switches within the northeast, southeast and main substations. Street crews have begun leaf collection operations for the fall season. The city has begun advertising for a new wastewater superintendent position. Byron Richardson will be retiring in February of twenty twenty-two. City staff held a kickoff meeting with IDOT to discuss the road diet project. It's anticipated that the initial feasibility study should be ready for submittal by early twenty twenty-two. From our human resources department, our HR director, Chief Dyke and Deputy Chief Hanson attended a labor management meeting with IAFF. HR staff is preparing for open enrollment to take place November first through the twelfth. Open enrollment will be held online this year. The city received very favorable insurance rates for twenty twenty-two. The HMO plan received a reduction of negative twenty-one, or negative twelve point one percent. And a PPL received a negative three point three percent reduction. Our HR director prepared information for the upcoming collective bargaining meetings. For our fire department, ESO software implementation, Illinois Fire Chiefs Conference, uh, were attended. Meetings and webinars, bicycle plan meeting, labor management meeting, Tri-City ambulance chiefs meeting, DuPage emergency management meeting, DuPage one hundred club meeting, and statewide terrorism and intelligence center meeting. That's the, uh, report for this week.
Hey, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, just a quick, I have a quick question as it relates to the, um, leaf pickup. If residents have collected any leaves, uh, debris such as that to input into those lawn waste bags, will those be picked up or should they put stickers on them?
I think the bags would still need stickers on them.
And I think it's only like in December that they take the bags.
Yeah.
For free.
I was just about to wonder if somebody had a question for me in that regard, so I won't, I thought that was the answer as well.
Yeah, so during the leaf pickup, my recollection is during leaf pickup, you don't need those bags, but before and after, you need the bags. But typically, we've added one, like with bags, when the weather gets too cold or when it starts to snow because of the fact that they can't sweep them up.
Yeah, the waste hauler will pick them up. Um, I believe you're right. I think it's after November, like after Thanksgiving, they usually do that.
Likely to be later this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any others tonight? Your honor?
Yes, sir. Just so everybody knows, uh, a new twist in the city communications with our community. Uh, we have, I've received a couple complaints about Halloween decorations. And, uh, some people feel that, some people have gone way over the top and have put things out that are well too suggestive or whatever have you. I don't know. I think it's my personal opinion. It's all in the eyes of the beholder. If you don't like it, look the other way and be done with it. We do have one situation, however, over on the east side, where for the first time ever, somebody decided that they would use a city utility pole for, uh, hanging dummies on. And so they've climbed up on the utility pole and nailed the dum- uh, dummy sliding down the pole. And it's up, you know, beyond reach of anybody, so we're gonna have to be taking, we already, I, I think maybe tried to contact the folks today and tell them they have to take the dummy off the utility pole because there's electrical lines up there. And it's, we do not allow anybody to put anything on any of these, as you all know, from campaign signs to, you know, rummage sale signs to whatever, we don't allow anybody to do anything. These folks went and hung a life-size dummy on the city electrical pole. So we're dealing with this. If any of you hear about it, yeah, you may, because it's becoming quite the neighborhood conversation piece, so I'm led to believe.
Okay. Things you don't think you have to tell people not to do. Hank, who's a utility pole.
I have a question.
He didn't go ahead.
The water main work that's going on out here?
On Houston or on River Street?
River Street.
Okay.
Is that, we're in the three-day period that it's supposed to take now, right?
I believe so. Did they start on it yet? I haven't been across the bridge yet.
There's a hole. I thought, yeah, I didn't know it was starting yesterday or today.
Yeah, I saw the signs on twenty-five this weekend. Um, I believe it was listed for this week.
Okay.
So they did start today?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, I would, anybody that wants to go through there, be prepared that there is going to be more traffic when there is only two lanes on South River.
Yeah.
I mean, they've got crossing guards and everything out there. They seem to be handling it very well. I'm pleased by what I've seen the last two days.
It looked, it looked well organized.
Okay, any other questions?
Tom?
Uh, I received a couple inquiries about the utility drop box on Wilson, just east of Prairie. There's signage saying that it's closed indefinitely. And when I drove by, I noticed that it wasn't. Is that actually closed and is it?
I am not sure. I know we're...
So, so I, I've seen some, I've seen some work going on in that turnaround. But, um, I don't know if it was closed indefinitely. I just saw it closed when the work was going on.
Okay, we will find out. Anthony will find out for us and get a message out to us if we have to find out from Gary Holm or Water Department, whoever's working over there, what's happening, because I'm pretty sure we're ready to decommission that site. And are we gonna do something with it, do you think, your honor? Weren't we gonna decide what we're gonna do with that property?
That's been, you know, being hashed around to come to you guys with some ideas, but I don't know if Laura was ready to do anything.
Okay. But I think we should at least know, especially if we have the, the drop box over there still, whether or not that's available for people.
Get some information on that, Alderman Wolf.
Find out that answer and then just email it out to everybody.
Yes, sir.
So we got it. Thanks, Tom.
Alan?
Go ahead, Lee.
Um, I was gonna reach out to Laura, but she's unavailable this week. So does anybody know when, um, the IDNR funding expires for the dam?
I don't think we have an answer on that. I don't think they've said that we had a timeframe that we had to make a decision within.
Right.
I think they had just kind of said that there was money available for it and once we decided what we were doing with it, then we had to go back to them with the plan.
Okay.
And we, we had to show the intent.
Right.
Sent that letter with the park district that we intend to do something.
Right.
That was the first step.
So that we don't get pushed off that list.
Okay.
Because we've already been there and...
So we're not under the wire? Or over the wire?
At this point, I mean, until they write a check to us or until they send us a letter that says they're actually paying for something, I'll believe it when I see it.
You just gotta hope the state's got the money to give anybody anything. And there's people that doubt that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody online have any others tonight?
No one online, Alderman Wolf.
I'm talking to the aldermen. I see no hands, so we are good. Um, other than that, I had one comment. I kind of followed a social media thread that there was, I guess, a question about somebody with piles of walnuts in their yard. And it wasn't my backyard. It was somebody else that had them out and was, I guess, approached by somebody from the city. We don't know who, that told them that they had to remove them all. So I don't know what the answer for that is or if we need to get an answer back from code enforcement, if somebody was there. Oh, Jeff, do you have any idea? Have you heard?
Yeah, that, that was, that was, that was my staff.
Okay.
Did that. Um, we have, we followed up with that resident today. Um, I think there was some misunderstanding there. Um, there, there is no ordinance that says they can't have the walnuts there.
Okay.
It was a, it was a complaint, it was a complaint from the neighborhood.
Okay.
About feeding, uh, feeding animals is what it came down as. Um, but we, we have reached out to that resident. We, I believe we spoke with her today.
Okay.
So hopefully that's, hopefully that's all resolved.
Yeah, because I know I'm feeding about two thousand squirrels. I keep ripping them apart in my backyard. And I have, I bet you I have three, maybe four garbage cans full of black walnuts. And they're not even my trees. Which is the craziest part.
But there's a nice way where you can peel them.
Yeah, I know. We'll, we'll send them all to Mike. Okay, um, if there are no others, then I will look for a motion for adjournment.
No moved.
Second.
Motion by Yor, second by Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, everybody have a good night, have a good week. Go to the football game Friday night. Watch the Bulldogs win.
Go to the swim meet in two weeks.
And then if they win, they can go play the Bears and beat them.